The SAVE, which is the Secure Advanced Vision for Education, is the one cent property tax. Last year, we added a new fund, the Student Construction Fund, and that's to support our trades program at the high school. The Capital Project Sales Tax Bond Fund is, it's basically an internal service fund as we do have sales tax bonds that were issued. The final payment will be in July of 2029. So funds are transferred out of the SAVE fund into this Capital Project Fund, and that's what's used to pay our debt. The Activity Fund, the Student Activity Fund, there's no property tax or state funding. The revenues are derived strictly from athletic and other co-curricular activities. Nutrition Fund, again, there's no property tax. The revenues come from state and lunch, state and federal funding, supplements, and also the lunch fees that we charge for students. Then we have the Special Revenue and Fiduciary Funds. Those are the trust funds that, donations that individuals and companies have given to the district for specific purposes, either could be scholarships or other specific purposes, such as music programs and things. So again, the Heart and Consols, the General Fund, and really what drives the district's revenues, there's two components. It's our certified enrollment that's taken October 1st of each year, and the state allowable growth, which is the per pupil. Our student enrollment for next year was 4,137.4, and the state per pupil funding will receive a $6,880, which was the 2.06% allowable growth, which we'll talk a little bit about that in just a couple slides. When you look at the enrollment trends, again, that's really a driver. We dropped, you know, 125 students between 2018 and 2019. And you can see the trend all the way back from 2005 to current is that, you know, the trend line is obviously going down as we continue to lose students along with the rest of the Burlington community. State, again, state projections are that we will continue to decline in student count, roughly 70 kids per year. Another part of our certified enrollments, the open enrollment, so you kind of show the trends, went from 676 to 705, open enrolled out, as those students are included in our certified count. It's basically just a pass-through of funds, but you can see our open enrolled in students also increased from 74 to almost 92 students this year. Want to talk about the allowable growth. That's the amount that set the state per pupil that we receive. You know, again, the legislation increased the per pupil funding at 2.06%. Does that mean we have an increase of revenues of 2%? And the direct answer to that is no, because the other part of that equation is our student enrollment. As we're losing students, you know, that direct correlation, the new money or allowable growth instead of 2.06, it's actually a negative 2.56%. So you can see the trend, you know, back years ago, we used to get 4%. You know, the last five to 10 years, you know, the 2% or 1% is even more common. So our new money, you can see the last five years, 2 in 95, 97, negative 235, 94, and 762, negative. So the trend line continues to go down. And this slide shows you that, the historical new money. You can see the trend line is approaching zero, and when you look at, if the board recalls, the five-year projections for our new money, it actually will drop below zero the next five years. So again, the allowable growth is basically not keeping in pace with, to offset the student declines in enrollment, so. So what's the key variables in our property tax rate? Again, the certified enrollment, you can see, is the biggest part. We dropped 125. Preschool is its own program. It's funded solely by the state, but we have 171 students in our preschool program for next year. Supplemental state aid was a 2.06. The dropout prevention, at-risk program, is another component of our property tax. So we decreased that by 17,857. That's at 919,000 next year. We do have the instructional support levy, 10% of our regular program. Cash reserves, also a component of the property tax rate. We are not levying any cash reserves for next year. Again, another component of the property tax rate is the valuation. You can see our taxable valuation increased by 4.46%. The TIF valuation, well, also went up 9.1. That's not included in the calculation of our general fund property taxes. Board-approved PEPAL remains at 63 cents. The voter approves at 67. Management levy, we're levying $2 million compared to 1.3 million. The biggest reason for that increase is we are looking at moving some expenditures out of the general fund to the management fund, to provide some relief to the general fund, which we can cover through management fund. The calculation, again, of the general fund, the regular program, when you take the 4,00137 students times the 6,880, which is going to generate 28,465,000 in regular program. With the declining enrollments, if you recall back to the allowable growth slide, the last five years, we've qualified for this budget adjustment, and the state provides some assistance to schools with declining enrollments, where you are guaranteed to receive 101% of the previous year's regular program. Again, whatever the previous year's number of that, they allow you to 101% of that. Because of the decline, we are going to receive 529,000 next year in the budget guarantee. Again, that's just a one-year funding, as the following year, they will take that away. We also receive supplemental waiting. We have special education students that are waited. Last year at our count, we had 629 special ed students, which is the equivalent of 762 students. Based upon our students, we also receive some additional funding for at-risk, students identified as at-risk, and those that are English language learners. So we also have the equivalent of just shy of 43 students. So we'll receive in supplemental waiting, 5,538,000 next year. Kind of the breakdown of the general fund, again. The regular program is the, our certified enrollment times the cost per pupil. The supplemental waiting, we just talked about, we get supplemental waiting for special education. The area education agencies are also funded through the local school districts. So that becomes part of our general fund. It's basically just a pass-through of our revenue and expenditure. We never actually receive the cash. They go straight through the AEI. Our dropout program that we talked about, our at-risk, is part of the general fund. The instructional support, that 10% of our regular program. The preschool is part of our general fund, and then the categorical miscellaneous are the categorical funds that we receive from the state, along with federal programs such as Title I, or deemed to be the categorical miscellaneous general fund. So those are the major components that make up our general fund revenues and programs. So when you look at the calculation, then, of the actual property tax rate, what they do is they take your assessed valuation times $5.40, and that's the same for all districts across the state. So that's the, what they call the uniform levy. That's the first component under the property tax. The state, then, takes that $6,880 and say, "We're going to fund 87.5% of that $6,880." So they take 87.5% of that, minus whatever this uniform levy generates, and that's what we receive then in state aid. Normally, the remaining 12.5% is all property tax. That's what they call the additional levy. As we talked about earlier, we do receive some property tax relief based on our assessed valuation per pupil. So this remaining 12.5% is normally all property tax, but we do receive some additional state aid to help reduce our property tax burden, so. When you look at the dollars making up the general fund, the uniform levy, as we talked about, that 5.40 is going to generate $5.2 million, so that's $226,000 increase from the previous year. That's a direct correlation to the increase in our assessed valuation. The additional levy, that 12.5%, we talked about, is 3,458,000. So that is down 91,000 from the previous year, and a big part of that is because of this increase in the uniform levy. Budget guarantee, again, that's 539,000. That's all property tax, one-time funding. Our at-risk dropout prevention, the board approved in November, is 919,000. The instructional support levies generating 1.8 million. So our total general fund dollars is 12,800,000, which is down 886,000 from the previous year. When you break that out, as far as the components of the property tax rate, again, you have the uniform levy is $5.40. That additional levy with 12.5% is $3.53, so it is down roughly a quarter from the previous year. The budget guarantee, last year was over $1 million. You know, it's the 500,000 this year, so our budget guarantee is coming down 57 cents. The dropout prevention dropped 6 cents. Cash reserves, again, we didn't levy any cash reserves, so that's a 57 reduction, and then instructional support levy is roughly 9 cents. So the general fund levy within itself is a reduction of $1.49. So again, what are we, what is the board approving or certifying? This is what was published, the board approved for publication. Again, it's a combination of all funds, estimated revenues and expenditures. It shows actual for '18, estimate for this year, and then a budget for next year. So breaking this down a little bit, when you look at the revenues, you can see the taxes levied are down overall from the previous year, estimated utility tax replacement, rest of these, the tuition earnings, we are, with the increase in our interest rates, we are getting a little bit more on our earnings on our investments. Nutrition program revenues estimated to be the same, along with activities, other revenues from local sources, the state foundation, again, as part of that general fund calculation. So I will note, you know, the state always puts in some state aid for the instructional support levy. You can see the previous two years are zero, and the state will again pull that, so this 177,000 will go away once the legislature concludes. Other state sources is the bulk of that, is the sales tax. Then you have the commercial industrial taxes, Title I, other federal sources and grants. So total revenues estimated to be 60,533,000 next year. On the expenditure side, there's really four components that we certify. Those are both, the instruction, support services, non-instructional programs, and the other expenditures. Again, the instructions, the teaching staff, support staff in the classrooms, and then you have all the support services. Non-instructional program, that's the, basically, the lunch program. And then the other expenditures, the bulk, is the facilities related, along with the debt service and the AEA's, again, are part of our, recorded as part of our expenditures. What we do with, again, what we're certifying is the maximum amount that we can spend for next year. So I typically, you know, our costs go up on average about 2% every year, so I look at our estimated expenditures, increase at 2%, and then I do build in some extras, as we do a pretty good job at getting some grants and things that we don't always anticipate. So always want to make sure that we have budgeted to spend those types of items, so we do build an increase in our expenditures for those reasons. So when you look at the expenditures, again, by fund, the general funds, 53,439,000. The activity fund, we're budgeting at 460. The management fund expenditures of 1.7 million. Student construction fund, we kept the same at 150, which is what we went to the SBRC for. Sales tax and facilities at 4.3 million. The physical plant, we're estimating to spend 1.5 million. Again, the facilities related, we might always increase that a fair amount, just to protect us in case we had something major breakdown that we would have to repair, so. Debt service and food service expenditures are pretty consistent with the previous year. Revenues, again, the general fund, revenues of 50,486,000. Activity funds are, anticipate to be the same at around 460. The management levy, again, we did increase that, as we anticipate moving some expenditures out of the general fund to the management fund. Sales tax and physical plant equipment are pretty consistent with the previous year, along with the debt service and food service. So again, what are we really certifying? There's really four different lines. We have our instructional, anticipated instructional expenditures, support service expenditures, the non-instruction, which is, again, food service, and the other expenditures are facilities related. So what we're certifying is the maximum amount that we can spend for next year at 63,466,000. The other item we're certifying is the property tax rate, so at $15.07 for next year. So the state will, as they always do, do a little bit of true-up when they get all the schools in June 30th, and will have the opportunity, then, to potentially lower it if the state were to raise it. We can never raise it above what we certify, but we can lower it before the state finalizes the budget, so. And just in summary, I think it's always kind of good to look through when you look at the levy and control and summary, how much of it is real, does the board really have control over? So when you look at the property tax, that's all generated by the state formula. The instructional support is approved by the board. The preschool, again, is all state, through state formula. Miscellaneous income has nothing to do with the property tax rate. The dropout prevention's approved by the board. The management and PEPAL, board-approved PEPAL, 33 cents is board-approved. The voted PEPAL is approved by the voters. When you look at our total budgeted expenditures, the voters have approved 4%. Board actually only controls about 33% of the property tax rate, is 63% of our levy rates controlled through the state formula. So that's what I've got. I'd be happy to answer any questions in regards to this presentation. If there are questions on this, the board will actually take action on the budget a little bit later.
Did the legislators vote to equalize a little bit of the transportation costs?
They did. They're providing some transportation relief for districts. We don't qualify for any transportation.
Okay.
Greg, what are the other enterprise funds on page 24 and 25 for the revenues and expenditures? What expenditures are those? It's the last one after food service on 24 and 25.
Oh, the other enterprise, that's the student construction funds.
There was a talk of a bill floating around there to limit local governments to 2%. You know where that's at? That no local government will be able to spend more than 2% of that going to the legislative expedition.
I haven't heard anything. I've heard that that's not on very strong legs.
It scares the hell out of me.
Yeah.
And that would affect cities.
It affects cities, too.
Cities, and affect counties, affects small districts, and, you know, it's supposed to be all about small government, local control. Seems to me like we're going the other way, and I don't particularly want Des Moines, I know what it's like up there, and I don't particularly want them running the school district here in Burlington, so.
That's right.
I'm keeping my eye on that, but you guys haven't heard anything, so that's good news. I wouldn't think it'd pass this year, and if it doesn't pass, it certainly won't pass next, so. Thank you.
Anybody from the public have anything to say at the public hearing? If you do, you can come to the podium and tell us. All right. We will close the, do I need a motion to close the hearing? Let's just close the hearing, then, move on to the next item. The consent agenda, is there a motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda, including payment of bills previously paid in the amount of $534,750.04, unpaid bills in the amount of $321,631.33, and gifts in the amount of $1,030.85 for the sport name.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hadburg. Any discussion?
I just had a question, and I've already spoke to Mr. Reynolds about it, but maybe you could clarify for everybody, so they know what I asked about the $150,000 for Aldo Leopold Middle School, one-to-one expenditure.
Yeah, that's the purchase that the board will see through CDW, that we're purchasing, roughly 650 Chromebooks for next year. Part of that's a normal rotation program that we have to replace Chromebooks every year, and then with the change in the building structure, with Aldo Leopold next year going to a five and six building, they are building, or purchasing carts with 28 Chromebooks for each of the classrooms in Aldo Leopold for next year.
That's it. Just want to make sure everybody knew that.
So the fifth grade Chromebooks will be on carts, and the sixth graders will have their own? Is that what you said?
No, that full building will be, they're going to take the hall, the course Chromebooks and move those to Aldo, and then with the additional purchases, they're going to have carts in each of the classrooms, I believe, fifth and sixth.
Thank you.
So they leave them in the cart, they just use them while they're there?
Yep. Corey, you want to explain that better, please?
No, no. Got it.
I put you on the spot.
That's fine, no. There was a conversation between myself, Mr. Craddock, and the other Mr. Johnson about the Chromebooks for Aldo Leopold next year, and between amongst us, as we had that conversation, we thought it was, made the most sense with the intermediate building to have the carts in the school, maybe have computers available for students to check out if needed on a regular basis, but not sending them home one-to-one until seventh grade at work start.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Are all those in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll go on to District Positive Accomplishments, Professional Learning Communities, Ms. Butler.
Good evening. Angie Butler, Principal at Stone Middle School, joined by Chelsea Grimm and Megan Steer, middle school teachers. We're here tonight, Greg, if you want to pop that up there, to talk about professional learning communities. In June of last year, I had the opportunity to go to a learning institute for professional learning communities with another administrator and a couple of teachers, and we came back pretty excited about what we had learned about, and asked for permission to pilot professional learning communities at the middle school level. With that, we were able to organize teachers into content-specific collaborative teams, and then they were charged with meeting weekly to work on the PLC work. A lot of what we learned, we put into EduPlanet modules, which are online modules that teachers use, and when they met each week, they used those modules to kind of guide their work and really build that knowledge base around professional learning communities. And as you can see on the slideshow, PLCs are an ongoing way for teachers to collaborate around data. So they're using student data to drive their work, and from that, developing action research and better ways to really instruct students. This is continuous job-embedded learning for teachers. Go to the next one. Within a professional learning community, there's four questions that are asked. One, what is it we want our students to learn? Two, how do we know if they've learned it? Three, how will we respond if some students don't learn it? And four, how will we respond when some students already know it? So within those four questions, we started the work with our teachers of, under number one, identifying priority standards. So when you think about our common core curriculum, the standards is huge. There are a lot of standards to cover, and teachers are already kind of picking and choosing the ones that they know they can dig in deep on. All we're doing is asking them to sit down and agree on which ones are going to prioritize, and which ones are going to commit to every student learning. And that's what creates the second part of that, which is a guaranteed viable curriculum. We're guaranteeing that all students, no matter which teacher, which classroom, they're going to have the same expectations, and they're going to learn the same things. And viable just means it's going to be able to be covered within the amount of time given. The second question is, how do we know if they're going to learn it? We're tasking teachers, then, to come together and create performance scales and common assessments, so when they get together, they can determine whether or not kids have it or don't have it based on the same scale, the same tool, measurement tool. Number three, from that information, then, they'll determine, okay, we've got this group of kiddos who don't have it, how can we, how can we address that? How are we going to intervene so we can get them up to speed? Or four, we have a group of kiddos who've already gotten this, how can we challenge or enrich or extend their learning? So I'm going to let our teachers step up here and share a little bit.
My stuff is on the next slide. After going to the PLC training in June, I walked away from it energized and excited to get back to the classroom, and all the work that Mrs. Butler talked about, we can't implement it on day one of school, but I wanted to see what could I take from my training and implement it in my classroom, so I've been doing student data notebooks with the kids. They track their learning and their goals, both personal and academic, so academic goals can be, I want to work on my work completion, or my participation in class, or a leadership role in turn-in talks, or small group discussions. And personal could be, I want to do better in sports, I want to get more sleep, I want to, whatever. I try to conference with them, weekly to bi-weekly, just to check in on them, what can I provide to help you meet that goal? Do you need assistance from another student? Is there a phone call that I need to make home? And those one-to-one conversations on the kids has really made a difference on how kids act in my room, and their respect for each other, and the teacher-student relationship. We've also increased collaboration in addition to meeting with me. They have a partner that they discuss their goals with, and kind of a support system, a cheerleader. So we did some training on how do you build kids up and not tear them down, and so we've really been working on goals and collaboration, and talking, and being a better person, and as well as a student.
And my stuff is on the next slide. So when I attended the conference in the fall, I too came away with all sorts of things that I wanted to implement in my classroom, but being it was like October, it's hard to implement some of those things in the middle of the school year. So I kind of set a goal for myself that I, this is what I can start with when I walk back into my classroom on Monday. And one of the sessions that I went to was the student grading practices and student feedback session, and it really stuck with me, like, when I'm giving students feedback on their work, is it helpful? So how does my feedback helping them reach the goal? And the goal is kind of the learning targets and stuff that we're developing as a PLC group. So I'm, I was guilty of it myself, I'd write, "Oh, great job on their assignment." That's not helpful, right? So I would, I had to retrain my brain when I'd start to write, "Great job, I like how you did this," and give, even if they did a good job, try to take them to that next level and help them connect those dots. And one of the quotes that one of the speakers said was, "Grading procedures are related directly to the stated learning goals," and that ties in very nicely to this PLC stuff that we're working on, and the learning targets, and the scales that my group is coming up with, so.
So looking ahead, obviously, we're going to continue this work. We're going to continue to build capacity by taking more teachers to training and getting them excited about the work. They've started it, they've got their priority standards identified, they're working on their proficiency scales, and getting ready to really start building those common assessments. So what that'll look like is, once they have those common assessments, they can come together with that student data, pop it up and look at it, and have conversations about, wow, your class did amazing. What did you do in your classroom? Because my kids didn't do so hot. And they can learn from one another, and that's where that action research comes in, well, let's try this and see how this works. So it's really exciting work. Right now, we're doing a lot of the heavy lifting, but once we get everything in place, it's really going to be a very effective way to increase student achievement and improve on instruction. So we have six modules right now on EduPlanet. We're building the seventh on common assessment, so the teachers can work on that at the end of this year and into next year. And then next year, we should be able to hit the ground running with that collaborative inquiry and really looking at that student work. So it's exciting work. I'm very happy that we were able to pilot it and now continue with it. Do you have any questions for any of us?
I've got a question on the student achievement that you've seen. Have you been able to pull perennially struggling students up out of that struggle, and have you seen, or have you seen any differentiation there at all?
So right now, it's kind of early. Right now, we have interventions happening, but the struggle we had, we weren't sure exactly where to intervene, because the targets weren't always the same. So now that we've got consistent targets, consistent learning targets in all the classrooms, we can really, we can really focus in on what the intervention should look like. We know exactly what it looks like for students to meet that goal, so if a student's not meeting it, we know what the intervention should look like. So I'm excited next year for that really to come together and have those interventions be very focused and very dialed into what the learning targets are.
Is this across the building, or just the ones that have the training?
So that, this year, it was both middle schools, and the purpose of the online modules was because we couldn't take everybody with us, so we brought back that learning, and in the module, there are videos, there are articles and discussions, and opportunities for them to really dig into, what is a PLC? What does it look like to collaborate? What does it look like to create a common assessment? And really have those discussions. does it look like to create a common assessment, and really have those discussions, and then they're supported by instructional coaches throughout that process.
So all the staff have had?
Yeah, all the middle school.
Okay.
Yeah.
And as that changes next year with Edward Stone being the middle school and Aldo being intermediate school?
So my understanding is it's going to, yeah, it's going to continue.
Still works.
Mr. Kratic's going to take some teachers this summer, we're going to go again in June, and, and keep building that, that capacity, yeah.
So the common assessments you're developing, so like every English teacher gets the same test?
Right, so could, could be a formative assessment, could be a summative assessment, so, so if they have a learning target that they agree upon, then they're going to have a way to assess that, to what, to know whether or not the student's got it. It could be a writing sample, it could be, it could be a variety of things depending on the, the level of difficulty of the, of the standard or the target that they're trying to meet. It's just a way to kind of compare apples to apples. So when they sit down, they're looking at the same kind of information because they took from the same tool. And it's real important that that student, that, that's teacher-created, that's not something that I'm coming in saying, here's what you need to do. They're the experts in their content, they're the experts with their kids, they're going to make those determinations.
Andy, I can address the question a little more in terms of, so that, you know, the middle schools have really done a great job of kind of taking the lead on this work this year, and I was really excited when I came in and Mrs. Butler was excited to roll with this. As the board's aware, the district-wide, we've had collaboration built into the professional development time with some, with some release in those Friday afternoons for teachers, and we really worked this year to kind of, district-wide, to strengthen that a little bit and make it a little bit stronger and really refocus in at the elementary level. When we talked about the power standards and the standards-based report cards that we spoke about this fall and have been implemented this year at the elementary level, that's a piece of this work as well. And at the high school, they've been doing some conversations around grading. So as we move into, you know, as we move into the next school year, Mrs. Butler shared that she's taking some additional teachers to the institute. We've also made a commitment for all of our, this summer's one of the common learnings for all of our administrators and all of our teacher leadership positions, our TLC coaches, is to attend one of these institutes as well, so we can begin to build that common language and that common piece across the district, and hopefully, we can use some of the materials that they've been developing at the middle schools for all staff to kind of get that together. And I wanted to read a quote to you real quick that I took to all the staff earlier this school year, but it, the reason we do this work and it really is important to push it district-wide, and this comes from an author named Heidi Gardner, in a book called Smart Collaboration. "The greatest asset in any knowledge-based organization is the expertise of its professionals. The most important challenge faced by any such organization is bringing that collective expertise to bear on the problems that increasingly are so complicated and so sophisticated that no single expert, no matter how smart or hardworking, is, is in a position to solve them." Our, you know, the, this framework really puts the, the decision-making power and really, you know, honors the professionalism of the teachers and allows them to work together to solve, you know, and take us to that next level, so.
That's great. Any, any other questions? Mrs. Butler, I want to give you kudos for the Edward Stone Middle School Spotlight.
Oh, thank you.
That was awesome. I, I was, I was amazed by the breadth and the depth of the topics addressed by those students, and they weren't just cookie-cutter topics, I mean, they hit everything, and I, I can't, I don't, it's an encyclopedia full of stuff.
Yeah.
And they did a great job, and I'm glad that you pulled that together with parent-teacher meetings.
Yeah, it was an exciting opportunity to kind of pull that, that digital learning in and the parent-teacher conference and make this, this new thing that was really very successful.
And there were snacks, and the kids were excited, and it was awesome.
Well, thank you.
Fantastic job.
Excellent, thank you.
All right.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right, next item on our agenda is the student representative report. What do you have for us?
Okay, so today, there is a boys varsity.
Could you pull the microphone right over in front of you there?
Sorry. Okay, today, there's a boys varsity and, I guess JV as well, game in Davenport, and the girls have a game tomorrow.
Soccer, yeah.
Yes, sorry, sorry. And then also, girls tennis has a meet tomorrow at Dankwood, if anybody wants to stop by. And so Dreamcatchers is working on two new dreams right now, they just launched in like the past two days. And one is like a, this old man wants to see his grandson graduate, and he doesn't really have much time, but it's like it won't probably be until May, so they're going to try and work and do a graduation party, slash, him and his wife are having like, I think it's their like 55th anniversary together, so they're doing like a half-and-half party. And, so that's one, and then the other one is, this man used to go and get like fancy lobster meals like once a week with his wife, and he hasn't been able to do that because he's like housebound. So they're catering in like this really, really nice meal for him, so he can have lobster. Yeah. TSA's currently in Des Moines right now, competing, and they'll find out the results tomorrow, but I think that's still pretty important. And then, as you guys know, this, and last week was testing, and as like a student, it's like completely different for me, and I just like wanted to say like, it's really cool, compared to how it used to be, it's really nice being able to do it on our Chromebooks, and it's just a different like breath of fresh air compared to like writing down all this stuff, sorry about that.
Snap to it.
Compared to writing down all the old answers and stuff.
So you didn't have to fill in any old ones?
Right, yeah, we don't need our.
Didn't find yourself going to the screen trying to?
Yeah. Yeah, and then on Saturday is post-prom and prom and aid and prom, so, yeah, all the kids are super excited.
Excellent.
Yep.
That's good. Any questions? Good job, thank you.
Good luck tomorrow.
Fun and safe prom.
Thank you. Talk about looking up to go to. Tell her you're fast.
Okay.
Thank you, we will move on to superintendent's report.
Okay, real quick, April, and I'll speak loud, I'm not yelling at anybody, I'm just making sure the speakers pick us up. April's Child Abuse Awareness Month. Coming up on 30 years in education, there is nothing more gut-wrenching than an abused child. And, so take this and realize what you're doing as you work through our school, you're empowering our staff to report when need be and to help families at, at times of crisis. And that's what these reminders are for. Did I give you one?
Yes.
I forgot you.
No, no, you got me first.
This reminded me of that.
Yeah. Driver, sport car that's sticking out.
It will remind me of all our hard work, our business.
Yeah, it is. Child abuse doesn't just happen in impoverished families, it happens at all levels. There are far-reaching negative repercussions that can haunt a child throughout their adult life, and we just need to do everything we can to continue to make every attempt to absolutely mitigate it to as much as we possibly can.
And it can be, I'm sorry, it can be physical.
At all.
Emotional, verbal, you can take on many forms.
And it's pretty much proven that abused children become abusing adults, so.
Correct. Yep.
It's really important.
So, as we mentioned, standardized testing last week, I met with President Ross and Vice President Kendall, discussed this board meeting and also other items. I met with A.D., Shay, and Edward Stone Middle School Principal Butler, we discussed the possibility of middle school baseball. That conversation went toward a club, much like the Clayhounds. I attended the Great Prairie Superintendent Meeting, it was very heavy on developmental abnormal psychology. I do have a minor in psychology, so I did find it very interesting. It, it is important that I, that I had these reminders, I thought it might have been a little bit better information for actual interventionalists and those type of things, but it's also important for me to remember that, especially with this being Child Abuse Awareness Month at all times. Greg continues to work his magic with insurance. Through his efforts with Becker and Associates, we're able to get the, the ACA affordable stuff taken care of, so nobody will be going to the, to the exchange. Mr. Rounds, good job. We held a couple of roundtables. Jen and I attended the mayor's volunteer recognition dinner. I'm happy to say that Mr. Vikstrom was recognized, and what a lot of people don't know is that not only, I mean, they, obviously, you see him on the school board, but he's also at Saturday School, and he's also at BeLa quite a bit, helps with all kinds of stuff behind the scenes. It's, greatly appreciate everything you do, Mr. Vikstrom, and congratulations on the award.
You've got so many PTO people doing all kinds of things that are carrying this system, and if we didn't have the volunteers, we wouldn't have what we had. I just take that for all the rest of the people, this is an individual award.
Well-deserved individual award, I may add. I appreciate your humbleness. Mr. Kent Lewis was also nominated, he has been working at Edward Stone Middle School, facilitating a drama club, after-school pieces program, and then my own hooligan, Joseph, and another Elijah Kirby were both nominated, they volunteered all four years with the Club M Mentorship Program for elementary children after school. On a side note, it is National Volunteer Month, so more of that stuff will be coming up here in a bit. I attended a lunch meeting with Iowa Wesleyan University President Titus, during the meeting, we discussed regional partnerships that are developing. I attended the Alliance Energy Mini Meeting with President Terry Kuba, I believe is the correct pronunciation, and it really turned into a Q and A, and.
Probably on rating increases.
We are. And that 25% that came out to everybody, and he was explaining to that everywhere to Sunday. I thought the Hawkeye did a, a, a nice job, and it was a well-written article on the nurses, or the nurse, not nurses, but my highlight of, of the, of the week and quite possibly the month was Mrs. Butler and Mr. Ross, thanks for mentioning that, because that was an example of doing something in a different way and bringing excitement and energy into the school, and the kids were smiling, they couldn't wait to show me what they were doing. And I went into Mrs. Gill's classroom, and it took me, it took me a while because I was working equations the long way and letting them fall down with the answer at the bottom, and the kids were like, that's not how we do that! I'm like, just stay with me now, because it will work! And it did, and they were amazed, and I think I confused everything that Lucy had taught them, but.
How was that ice cream cone, by the way?
It was awesome.
There you go.
I am a huge ice cream fan. But Mrs. Butler, thank you very much. That was an example of ingenuity, getting after it and being brave and jumping, surging forward, so just keep that up. President Ross, Mr. Reulzheim, met with a West Burlington firefighter working on a proposed water safety course for autistic children. When this first came out, I was, I did some research, and it's amazing how autistic children drown compared to other children, it's 400% more likely. I had no idea, and all the training that I've had and everything I've attended, so we are very excited to support this initiative with the local firefighters, and we'll do whatever we can to support it.
They're teaching them how to swim, is that what you're doing?
Negative, they're teaching them how to stay away from the water, how to, how to stop, think, and not just, you know, be compulsive.
Is there something about that, that causes you not to be able to swim?
No, it's, you have no fear or awareness, so you can?
You, autistic children generally perceive things in a different manner.
Sure.
And they do not give off the appropriate signals to signal that they may be drowning to.
But they can still be taught to swim.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Jake's swim is very good.
And that will be part of it.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at. I didn't quite understand that part of it.
Yeah, but they could be in the water, breathing in water.
And not really realizing.
And they wouldn't be frolicking, they wouldn't be, so it is, I was, I was quite shocked when I read the data.
This is the first I knew that, I didn't like that.
Yeah, I didn't either. God bless the firemen for bringing it to our attention and letting us get after it. Very excited, the voted peple went through, thank you, Burlington. You know, you always worry about, you know, things such as right sizing and dividing your community and those type of things, it was good to see the, the unity and behind the effort. And then, don't forget that we do have the cabinet notes posted in a shared document. And then I'll say one thing about Derek Murphy, I had the occasion to go to Keakuk to a jazz festival-type program, and it was the professors from Iowa Wesleyan, the band people from all over southeast Iowa, a gentleman that had been with, with Lawrence Welk for 30 years. And my in-laws would push their furniture back and dance in their, in their living room while Lawrence Welk was on, but you've got to remember, my wife's parents were as old as my grandparents, so they were a couple of years. Anyway, Derek did a great job with, with the music, and it was great to see Mr. Queen, you know, people from here performing, you know, as opposed to leading, so that was a great.
When you get a little older, you might like to know that Lawrence Welk is still on, and you can watch that, so you can, you and your wife can start dancing too to that.
We do watch it.
You dance, push your furniture back and dance.
We, we've got a bigger house than they did.
There you go.
And they had 10 daughters crowding the dang place up, we can dance and not move any furniture.
Yeah.
And the clothes are coming back into style.
Yep, Lawrence is, Lawrence is still on, once or twice a week.
I know. My wife does watch.
I don't know how long he's been dead, but he's on TV still.
And then, just real quick, I was walking out the door, or I was walking in the door at Sunnyside, I've visited five different schools today, and this lady stopped me, and gosh, I can't remember her name, and she said, Mr. Cohen, I want to talk to you, and I'm thinking, here we go. And she said, I just want to let you know that my son graduated from DHS, and just this last week, he finished his PhD in math, and he has a, a, oh, where you go overseas and study, a fellowship, and she said that he has told her time and time again that he owes absolutely everything to the Burlington Math Department because of the way they lit the fire for him, and he, he just took off. I will find out what his name is, and I will, you know, try to get the newspaper to give him a call because.
Is he going to be like a Rhodes Scholar or what's he going to do?
Exactly, I think that's exactly what she said, and published all over the place and is quite accomplished, young man. And she just said, stay strong, ride this out, and just keep cranking out great kids.
That's great.
And that's, that's what we're going to do.
Good, good news, that's great, thank you, Pat. Any other questions for, for superintendent? All right, let's move on to the next item. The Volunteer Proclamation, I guess I'll just will read this, it'd be the way to do it. This is Volunteer Month, and this is a proclamation that we have for the Burlington Community School District. Whereas the month of April is National Volunteer Month, the United States Burlington Community School District officially and purposefully recognizes and greatly appreciates the men volunteers who greatly enhance Burlington Community Schools' efforts in educating children and building community strength. Whereas the history of educational volunteerism in Burlington is extensive and historically significant, beginning in the fall of 1833, Mr. William R. Ross and volunteers erected a small cabin and dedicated the structure to preaching and day school. Thus Burlington Community Schools has garnered the value and gifts of volunteers for 186 years. The official beginning of the independent school of the city of Burlington is dated March 29, 1849, with the first board president being a volunteer, Mr. James Clark. And whereas April is dedicated to honoring all of the volunteers in our schools, Burlington Community School District Board of Education encourages volunteerism not only in our Burlington schools, but in the greater Burlington community. The selfless, selflessness of volunteerism has been and continues to be a fundamental tenet of the very civic fiber of Burlington. And whereas we, the Burlington Community School District Board of Education, pay tribute to our volunteers and honor their contributions to our community, let us strive with renewed determination to strengthen our schools as we collectively strive to fulfill our obligations to the children in our schools. We greatly appreciate each volunteer's service and sacrifice. Now therefore, I, Brian Ross, President of the Burlington Community School District Board of Directors, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2019 as Volunteer Appreciation Month and ask all Burlington citizens to take the time throughout the month of April to seek opportunities to express appreciation for our many volunteers, as well as consider ways in which you could become a volunteer, thereby adding your strengths and talents to the rich and lengthy history of Burlington volunteerism. How about that? So, tonight, we do have a volunteer here that we want to recognize. I'm going to read a little. I'm gonna read a little bit about this volunteer. Mr. Fred Chandler, or Mr. Fred, as he is known to many students, began volunteering in 1972. Forty-seven years. Fred moved to Burlington from Chicago where he worked at an orphanage for the Franciscan Brotherhood. And while working for Young House Services Boys Home, Fred was encouraged to volunteer so he could be more in touch with today's youth. That simple beginning as a volunteer, it head start has evolved and increased to where he is today. After retiring from the city of Burlington where Fred drove a bus for 30 years, he was approached by Margaret Losniak and in the, the in-school mentoring program. He would later become an active volunteer in the school district through the RSVP program. He fondly remembers the early years working with Donna Carlson in a mobile unit at North Hill Elementary School. Mr. Chandler has volunteered at North Hill, Grimes, Blackhawk, and Course, just to name a few. When asked about the impact he feels he has had on student, uh, students over the years, very humble Mr. Fred simply said, "The students have impacted me as much as I have them." He enjoys those moments when students will approach him out in public and ask if he remembers them because they remember him. And although he can't remember the names of many students he has helped, Mr. Fred continues to freely volunteer his time in hopes that he can, in some small way, help a student in need. So, Mr. Chandler, if you would come forward, I want to, uh, give you a challenge coin for the Burlington Community School District.
Yes, please.
It's a great honor to meet you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you so much for your gift to students at Burlington Community School District.
I know.
So this says, raising greyhounds, tradition of excellence, with our insignia. And then it says striving to have a profound, profoundly positive impact. And I think you've done that.
Would anyone like to read Latin on the other side of the coin? Fred, I, my father, uh, good Catholic gentleman, does read and speak and sing Latin. Um, it's the shield against ignorance is the, is the Latin side of it. And I wouldn't know that either if it wasn't for my dad.
Thank you very much. And we have one more, uh, of these to give out tonight. Mr. Cohen?
Yep. We've given one to every board member. We do have one new board member who hasn't received one yet. So, Mr. Courtney?
Thanks.
You're welcome. And, uh, that'll be something your grandkids will cherish someday.
I don't know if I cherish it, but they will, they'll like to have it.
I do. And thank you for your service. And here's the, well, here's the thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we take that out of your pay.
You can take it all out of my pay. It won't hurt anything. I'll pay for everybody's out of my pay.
You're so generous and.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you to all of our volunteers. We can't say it enough. Thank you. All right. Our next item on the agenda, uh, is our aid and levy budget proposal. Uh, we've had a public hearing, a presentation at this time. Is anything, Mr. Reynolds, you need to add?
At this point, just be glad to answer any conditional questions.
Okay. I have one thing. You said that, that, uh, people would pay less on their taxes. Actually, they'll pay less per thousand. If their value went up, they might pay more.
Yeah, assuming a consistent valuation.
Right, exactly. And I think we've all seen some of our tax bills. Some of them have gone up, so. All right.
But it will go up less.
It will go up less.
It'll go up thanks to us.
Yeah, that's right. That we're doing everything we can. That's right. Any, any, anything from the board? If not, I'll take a motion.
I know we approved the certified budget establishing the 2019, 2020 spending authority and levy as presented.
Second.
Thank you, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Great job. Move on to the next item, uh, the amend, amendment to the Juvenile Court Services Agreement.
Yes, but last, uh, spring, the board approved. It's basically a five-year agreement with an annual renewal. Uh, this would be a year or two for the agreement. The initial agreement they just gave us an anticipated or estimated budget for next year, uh, 26,707. You can see with this amendment, it's actually 26,968, so about $261 different from their estimated budget for next year's.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Roberts, are there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Abstain.
Oh, thank you. I should've asked. I apologize. I have one abstain. Very good. Um, okay. The last item then is board communications. Will we have an exempt session, Mrs. Dean? We will, okay. Um, Dean, would you start tonight?
Yes, uh, I think it's a travesty that so few people came out to vote for the pebble. We had 600, what, 693 people out of all these registered voters that came out. Thank God it was four to one, but, you know, I would think people would have more interest when 51% of their taxes go to the school system. And, and the fact that this is economic development, developing people that can perform jobs. And, uh, that, that always bothers me, the few people that show up for school board elections. It's bothered me all my life. I haven't missed an election my whole life. Okay? The other thing is, we talk about standardized tests and I think they're worthless, but we get them thrown down our throats. What the hell do they teach you other than go out and memorize something? And a good example is what's happening now in the court system with people that hire somebody to take these standardized tests for their kids to get them in schools. And what, what's the value of it then? I think we should be out teaching people to think rather than memorize, although I've memorized a bunch of stuff that saved my tail on a few things. But I'm not gonna go out and memorize, you know, the, the population of Ghana or something that I'm never gonna use. But the thing, we've got to get to the point where we test on something that people can use as opposed to slamming these things down. And it's a control issue. And that's obvious. We want to be in control of what's going on. But what good does it do our students? That has always bugged me.
How do you really feel about it?
Pardon?
How do you really feel about it?
You want more? I'll get up on a soapbox for another half hour if you want me to. I was in education. I know the disvalue of this stuff, the worthless aspect of it. You know, few things everybody should know, but some of this stuff, I just don't buy it.
Thank you, Dean.
Yep.
I'm gonna jump to Heather.
I just want to thank the voters who did turn out and, uh, very happy to see it pass as well as it did. And also I hope that all the juniors and seniors have a good time in prom and stay safe.
I'm gonna jump back to Deb.
I also attended the, uh, Ed Stone Spotlight and I, I thought it was just a wonderful event. And the teachers I talked to said that they'd seen more parents that evening than they had in a very long time for the conferences. I really, uh, got a kick out of, I think it was in the eighth grade, uh, classroom. And I, I'm sorry, I don't remember the teacher, but we used to call them pict- pictoramas, I guess, of, of book reports. And, and she had the students do them. And, um, I said, it's so interesting to see some of the old techniques still being used. And she said, yeah, the kids really enjoyed them and they were very creative with them. So that was, that was really a nice event. Really was. Yep. Um, and the other thing is, I just like to thank, um, all the school personnel that have been dealing with, um, some challenges recently. And we just, we appreciate everything that you guys do. And, um, we just want to make sure that it's the best place we can have for our kids. And, and we're gonna keep working in that direction.
Thank you, Deb.
Uh, I echo what everyone said about the election and what Mr. Vikstrom said. Um, a few years ago, I read a thing that, uh, in the last interview that Hubert Humphrey gave. Hubert Humphrey had been a vice president of the United States and he'd been, I think, a UN ambassador, a United States Senator, a United States Congressman, the mayor of Minneapolis. And they said, this guy said, what was the most challenging job you ever had? And he said, member of a local school board. After all those things he'd done, the most challenging job was, was member of a local school board. And I agree. I don't know why people don't take this more seriously on Election Day because they should. They should, they should be swamping those polls on Election Day. The other thing I have to say is today, uh, 18 states now have declared, uh, emergencies over measles. Uh, this has gone, this has gone way too far. This country is gonna, we're gonna have a massive, massive outbreaks of measles and people need to go get shots. I, I don't, I don't know why they stopped taking it. I'm too old to understand any reason at all that they give for not taking shots. But if you're not take, getting your kids shots, you're not doing right by your kids. So if anybody still watches this on TV, go out and get your kids a vaccination for measles before you kill somebody.
Thanks. Thank you, Ms. Roberts.
Um, I just wanted to echo a big congratulations to Dean for all his volunteerism and to Mr. Chandler. Um, I would hope that the Hawkeye or someone would pick up something as wonderful as Mr. Chandler's wonderful service to our district. That, that's amazing. Thank you. Um, I hope everyone stays safe this weekend with prom. There's a lot of activities, I know, at BHS. Choir is this Thursday night at Ed Stone. There's choir concert. I think band is next Tuesday. And then the BHS play is April 26th and 27th. Write that down. That's all I have.
Thank you. I will echo the comments on pebble. Mr. Chandler, 1973 was that 72, 47 years of, of service and volunteerism. Thank you so very much. That's truly, uh, admirable is, is not the right word, but is incredibly appreciated. So thank you. And we have, as Dean alluded to, many volunteers, the PTOs, people who come into the schools and, and read and, and volunteer to help. Um, it's impossible to thank everybody, but hopefully they know how sincerely appreciative we all are for their work. Um, Greg, thank you for your hours and hours of work on the budget. I'm sure it took more than a 20-minute stab at it. So thank you for that and for getting our tax rate down and for working diligently on insurance for, for people. I appreciated the two very positive social media posts that I saw this last week. Both of them appeared after the incident at BHS, which was, incident at BHS was no fault of BHS. But the two very positive social media posts, one by a photographer and one by a student at BHS, I thought were just exceptional. I, I sincerely and deeply appreciated seeing those and them taking the time to, to do